Good morning. It is Wednesday, June 4th. We're here for our regular scheduled county commissioner meeting. We have two commissioners present. Commissioner Mullen is not able to attend today. We have our county administrator, Mr. Danzel, on our clerk of the board. And at this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise and join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the adoption of the current agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see us move two items from regular business and move them to consent. It would become items number 12 and 13 on the consent agenda. And that would be item C, Resolution 2025-0170, Rhodes Collective Bargaining Agreement. And item number D would become 13 on consent, Resolution 2025-0171, former Franklin County Administrator Indemnification.
I'll second. There's been a motion to second to move two regular scheduled discussion items, regular business items, C and D, to consent, making the consent agenda 1 through 13. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. With the adoption of the agenda, I would ask, is there anybody in the room for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move down to the approval of the consent agenda items 1 through 13.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of consent agenda items 1 through 13 as presented.
I second. There's been a motion to second to move consent agenda items 1 through 13 to approve them. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moves us down to regular business, request for consensus acquiring a metal detector camera utilizing grant funds, presented by Trinity Orozco. Mr. Danzel.
Mr. Chair, I would ask that we at least temporarily move that down and go through the other items. I know that Judge Orozco is going to be asking to utilize some of her grant funds that have got to be expended by the end of June for the purchase of safety and security equipment. I believe it's a metal detector and a camera. But as she is not here right at this moment, with her busy schedule, I would say, can we move this until maybe the, maybe make it item G?
Okay, so I don't also, I don't see, Mr. Sant here, the prosecutor.
I can present.
Okay, and we'll move to item B. Resolution 2025-0169 Prosecutor Office Inter-Budget Transfer Presented by Mr. Briggs.
And good morning, Board.
Morning.
So the background on this, in February of 2025, my office decided it was in the best interest of the county to contract for district court prosecutorial services with Rio Foltz Law Firm as the attorneys are experienced in providing services at district court. That agreement for professional services started in February of this year and has, is set to continue for a period of six months. The service provider is paid a flat rate of $10,000 a month for handling criminal cases in district court, trials and motion hearings. To date, we are behind on payments because we are, we need to transfer funds from our prosecutor office salaries and wages line item to the prosecutor office professional services line item. So we are asking to transfer $60,000 from that former line item to the latter. And that is the request. We are required by statute to do a budget transfer. And so that is what the resolution would, would achieve. And so that is our ask.
Questions, Commissioners? Mr. Danzel.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I sent over an email that Mr. Sant had, you know, responded to some of the questions that the board had had. I was just going to say, I find this to be a request that's, we need to probably approve because it's simply, we've got the budget, just line item, the wrong, basically. And so Mr. Sant told me that he's not going to come back in at the end of the year asking for $60,000 because we've transferred this to a different line item. So I would concur with Mr. Briggs and I would recommend that we let him do this.
So, Mr. Briggs, question. How, where are we at on the staff for the prosecutor's office? How many people are we down at this time?
I believe we're still down, I think we're down two, two positions. But one of those positions, we've agreed not to fill.
Right. In fact, we eliminated that position.
Right, right.
So we're down one position. If you happen to find somebody you want to hire, is this going to be detrimental to hiring that person?
Right, which we anticipate filling. No, we should still be able to fill that position starting July 1. We believe we have that position filled.
And you have the funds to cover that position?
Correct.
With the transfer of these funds, you still have the funds to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm good with that. Any other questions?
No, sir.
Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of Resolution 2025-0169 Prosecutor's Office Inter-Budget Transfer.
I second. There's been a motion to second for Resolution 2025-0169 Prosecutor's Office Inter-Budget Transfer. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll move down to E, Resolution 2025-0172 Proposed Bylaws Amendment for Benton Franklin District Board of Health Presented by Mr. McCart, who is our Franklin County Planning and Building Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. So I was given a copy of the Benton Franklin Board of Health bylaws and asked to take a look at them. And just for background music, I served more than eight years on a tri-county board of health. So I'm used to a multiple county board of health. Several years, I was the chairman of that. And I also worked, reworked the bylaws while I was on that board of health. And in reviewing your bylaws of the Benton Franklin Board of Health, it is my suggestion, and this is a verbatim clause that we added in our bylaws to keep the counties, I would say constitutionally compliant with their duty as the elected authority over your citizens. So I'm recommending that you immediately submit this to the board of health for consideration in, to be considered at the next board of health meeting. To add the language, "An affirmative vote from one county commissioner of each respective county is required for decisions relating to regulations, fee schedules, budget or budget amendments." So the board of health should not be adopting without an approval of anyone on this board regulations that affect your citizens, the spending of your money under your control, and/or setting fees that are charges to your citizens without having some kind of input on that. It allows, the bylaws currently have some clauses in there that talks about giving some cities the, you know, authorities to do their own thing. But you guys as counties aren't regulated to do that. You're not, you're not allowed to do that. And I also, going through the bylaws, have seen a myriad of inconsistencies, of problematic language that I think the by, would cause the bylaws to need to be reviewed. So an additional request in addition to that would be for you guys to ask the board of health chairman, which I know is Commissioner Mullen, to appoint a bylaws committee to work on reworking these entire bylaws for the board of health. And so I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions, Commissioners?
Thank you so much for looking into this. I've had the opportunity to visit with you about this. I do not sit on the board of health, but, but having been there a time or so, learning the process, appreciate your insight, and thank you for working on this. I, at this point, I don't have any questions. And yes, I do agree with you that this is a good action to take and that we should look at all of it. So, thank you.
So Wes, just to clarify, to let the public know that previous to the state changing the board of health, it was three commissioners from both counties. Now it's two commissioners from each county plus four other members at large. So we have members that are not elected, making financial decisions on the board of health. The thing that came into question as to why I asked you to look at these was that Commissioner Mullen and I both voted against the new updated septic tank rules that were more stringent than the states. And Commissioner and I, Commissioner Mullen and I both voted against it. And yet it passed. So our county is having to adapt to rules that we don't agree with.
Yeah, that's correct. With this language, that would no longer occur. You know, usually there's, there's not always the opportunity to discuss as a complete board what's going on. But at least if you have one commissioner that votes in the affirmative, it would move forward. So your third commissioner is kind of a silent positive in that respect. But if you voted both against it, we, we've had that happen in tri-county health up north. One of the county, both commissioners voted no on a, it was actually at a change to the budget that would have allowed for a new staff. What we did was, the motion went down. We regrouped. We had some further conversations. We were able to work out a very positive solution. Brought it back to the next board of health meeting and it flew through with no problem. So this, this really gives each county a complete voice in, in having the opportunity to represent your citizens effectively.
I really appreciate you looking through this. Wes, you're an encyclopedia because of your experience. And I appreciate you being here in Franklin County and thank you very much.
What happens when you get old?
I appreciate it because this, this, this looks like a lot of my papers I wrote when I was a kid and my mom went through them. And you dissected this thing very well.
Yes, sir. That's usually what I do.
So, Mr. Danzel.
I one time had Wes review a document for me. And his piece of advice was to not end a sentence with a prepositional phrase, so.
Well, I really appreciate it. And I think it's important that we pass this today so that it can be brought up at the next board of health meeting, which is June 18th. Because we got to have two weeks' notice, correct?
I believe it was 10 days.
10 days.
Yeah, I would transmit this immediately if you decide to approve.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve Resolution 2025-0172 Proposed Bylaw Amendment for the Franklin County District Board of Health and encourage us to transmit that immediately to them.
I second. There's been a motion to second for Resolution 2025-0172 Proposed Bylaws Amendment for Benton Franklin District Board of Health. Any further discussion?
Sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I don't see Ms. Orozco here yet, so we'll move down to Resolution 2025-0173 Franklin County Non-Sanctuary Jurisdiction Status Presented by Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just kind of a housekeeping, Ms. Orozco, Judge Orozco will be here next week and present next week. So we've gotten communication from her. And so we'll move that down for here to next week's agenda, if that works for you gentlemen.
So item A will be moved till next week?
Yes.
Okay.
As it pertains to the sanctuary county status, I'm sure that you have seen the couple of newspaper articles where 35 of the 39 counties in Washington State were listed as sanctuary counties. The four that not listed were Clickatatt, Yakima, Douglas and Adams. I don't really know the exact crux of the, for why we are considered a sanctuary county. But before you is a resolution that decries that, that talks about the board of commissioners support and Franklin County's support of the administration's policies. And what I plan to do with this, just so you know, is not just to, you know, pass a resolution to make a statement. What I'd like to do is take this, take some of the other work that you all have done, whether it's, pertains to vaccine choice or your support of young women in sports. And I think what we could do is send a package to the folks that I personally know in the Trump administration and say, hey, what gives? You know, let us know where we're running afoul. Because I can't tell of any policies that we've adopted at the county that would make us a sanctuary county. I think this just memorializes the fact that you gentlemen do not wish to be considered a sanctuary county. And then I think we take it to the top. I think we take it to the Trump administration and we send it to various officials there. And they're able to look at not only this resolution, but a letter from y'all saying, hey, this, it's the wrong Franklin County. I'm, we're not in support of our state laws that are counterintuitive to the federal laws and to the Trump administration. And so, long story short, this is a resolution to combat that. And I will make the promise to you that we will not be in that status for long.
Thank you. That was one of my concerns for many a meeting, was where are we, Franklin County, in this status of sanctuary state? And I was told we weren't, but obviously it looks as if we are, according to the Trump administration.
And I think the, Mr. Chair, the, the obvious reason is because the state of Washington and the, and this governor and the state legislature, they really have enacted laws that are sanctuary laws. But it's painting with a broad brush to say that all the counties in eastern Washington, specifically Franklin County, is supportive of those ordinances, policies, rules, laws. So I think we're in good, firm footing. I think we just need to let someone know, hey, you've got the wrong, you got the wrong county here.
Mr.?
I have no reason for me to, to add to what's been said. I, I think that this is a good action to be taken. Like you, I've been told that we are not a sanctuary county, but it's come up about once a year for at least the last three years. And here it is again. And I think this is a good action for this board to take, to specifically say that we are not a sanctuary county. And it dilutes the people that do the hard work to, to follow a legal path. And it dilutes their efforts. And that's, that's sad. And, and I'm thankful that we're going to take this action to, to say that we respect doing things the way that the law lays out.
So we have a resolution put together. Could I ask you to please read that to the public, Mr. Danzel? And that, we are also, I don't know if this has been addition to it. I think this has, this, this copy here does not have the last edition, but as I speak, we can find it. But the reason being is because we've already, working with Wes McCart, who, who was the chair of the Eastern Washington Council of Governments, we are trying to put together a coalition of counties in eastern Washington stating that we are not sanctuary counties. Please, so the public can hear it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well-written, Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that. "The Board of County Commissioners of Franklin County, Washington, expressing support for the principles and policies of the Trump administration in declaring the county's intention not to be a sanctuary jurisdiction. Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of Franklin County, Washington, is charged with representing the interests and citizens of Franklin County and ensuring the public health, safety and welfare. And whereas, the Board is committed to upholding the Constitution of the United States and the constitutional laws of the state of Washington and to ensuring safety, security and well-being of all its residents. And whereas, the Board recognizes the importance of clear policies regarding cooperation with all levels of government, including federal agencies in the enforcement of laws duly enacted by federal and state legislative bodies. And whereas, the administration has implemented various policies aimed at strengthening national security, promoting economic prosperity, enforcing immigration laws and ensuring the rule of law. And whereas, the Franklin County Board of Commissioners wishes to affirm its support for principles and policies that uphold the rule of law, promote public safety, encourage economic stability and ensure robust cooperation among local, state and federal authorities. And whereas, the term sanctuary county commonly refers to local governments that have adopted policies, ordinances or resolutions that limit or discourage cooperation with federal immigration authorities in the enforcement of federal immigration laws. And whereas, Franklin County opposes any Washington state laws that contradicts the administration and federal law. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners believes it's in the best interest of the citizens of Franklin County for the maintenance of public order, safety and the equitable application of laws that the county not operate as a sanctuary jurisdiction and instead fully cooperate with federal authorities to the extent required and permitted by law. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Franklin County Commissioners. Franklin County hereby expresses its appreciation and support for the efforts and policies of the administration that are directed towards enhancing national security, securing the nation's borders, supporting law enforcement, promoting economic growth and upholding the consistent enforcement of federal laws. Number two, Franklin County hereby declares its intent not to be a sanctuary county and opposes the adoption of any state laws, policies, ordinances or resolutions that would cause it to be designated or operate as such. Section three, Franklin County will continue to support and cooperate with federal, state and local law enforcement agencies in lawful enforcement of all applicable laws, including federal immigration laws to the extent permitted by the United States and Washington State Constitution. Section four, no county resources, funds, facilities, equipment or personnel shall intentionally be used to obstruct or hinder the enforcement of federal immigration laws where such enforcement is being carried out in accordance with law. County officials and employees shall cooperate with federal immigration authorities and the discharge of their lawful duties, consistent with the applicable legal requirements and limitations. And number five, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption."
Like I said, well-written. With the recent terrorist attacks that have happened on American soil, I think it's very important that we pass this today.
I agree, I agree. And I would just, after we pass it, I would encourage our administrator to forward it to our counterparts and, and encourage them to, to do something likewise. It appears that our attorney general and governor are actively trying to thwart this administration from, from protecting our citizens. And I would encourage you to forward this to them.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of Resolution 2025-0173 as presented. Franklin County, a non-sanctuary jurisdiction status.
I second. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We have moved the request for acquiring the metal detector till next week. We go down to correspondence, request to hire an information service network analyst.
Yes.
Mr. Danzel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And so I have to raise my hand for accountability and say that last week, as we were here in our meeting, you probably saw I was having lower back issues, but that's not an excuse. Bo Beckley, RIS director, had timely, in a timely fashion, gotten me a request to fill a position because we're under the hiring freeze. I simply overlooked it. So I should have gotten you that information last week. I was able to get that to you when we met earlier in the week. But I would ask for the board to approve information services to go out and fill a position for one that just left. And if I could explain just a little bit, IS, since they've taken on some of the badging and some of the other workload, and I'll get into this in my report too, as well as an increased workload just on the number of tickets that have been open and closed, we really can't fall behind when it comes to having our communications. And so I would recommend this. And then I would like to add a second piece of correspondence, if that's possible too, when you're done acting. Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So with the increased workload in the IS department, and I know that this is already underway now as far as separating the sheriff's office and corrections, some of the budget items that were intermingled. I know that, that action is underway. My assumption is that that would be a part of what happens in this instance. And so there, that was a part of the sheriff's department took that, handled that function in the past. And now the, the IS department will handle that function. So I'm assuming that there will be a, there will be a separation of this from the sheriff's budget as well.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. No more questions, Mr. Chairman.
And with that, of course, my main concern is a person has left the position. They're hiring a person to fulfill that position. There is no difference in their budget. There's no increase to their budget.
Budget neutral?
Budget neutral.
So yes, it's budget neutral. It was just, it was a employee that didn't, wasn't here a long time. But it's a necessary, it's a necessary position.
Just emphasizing the fact that we're not increasing the budget with this, it's budget neutral.
And this is request for consensus?
Yes. I would, I would, I think it would be better in form of a motion because it's going to be to allow Bo to go out to add to hire, Mr. Beckley, sorry, to go out to add to hire.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this request as presented.
There's been, I'll second. There's been a motion to, request to go out to hire information services to fill a position. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Danzel, you had a second component to the correspondence?
I do. I do. We, the Commissioner's Office, and I was gonna, this is a little backwards because I, it's part of my update here, but we hired an office assistant, Genesis Herrera. But Genesis comes to us from the Treasurer's Office. And because one of the, one of the roles that the office assistant plays is the role of basically being the clerk for the Board of Equalization, and we've got Board of Equalization trainings that are coming up. We had asked Treasurer Kelsner if we could expedite having Genesis join us. She was kind enough to do so, but her ask was, but could you maybe ask if I could fill that position since you guys are stealing her from me, which I think is understandable. It's also budget neutral, and I think it would be in the best interest of the county to fill that position as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request that was just made due to us to let the Treasurer's Office replace the employee that they are losing to the Commissioner's Office.
I second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to Commissioner Administrator updates. Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Of course, met with all the Commissioners individually to discuss the agenda and what projects you'd like, you know, us to be focused on. I'll be honest, the big majority of my days now are on this budget. And so met with Auditor Beaton and Treasurer Kelsner to discuss the budget. They've given me approval to utilize members of their staff for budget policies and review recurring and non-recurring expenses and inconsistent line items. Kind of a little bit of a background here, so bear with me. Because we are currently a bottom-line budget, there's no true way for you to know exactly where the funds are being spent as Commissioners. Because with it being a bottom-line budget, you can shuffle funds from one line item to another as long as you don't go over the bottom line. And with that, and with the lack of budget policies we have, this is permissible with the way that we do budgeting. The problem is that it doesn't give you all that are responsible for the budget and the fiduciaries, it doesn't give you accurate data that you can plan for and around. And so because we have no way of knowing if the line items are correct because of that, or if they've been utilized for other purposes, the only time that you'll likely ever know that there's been a problem or budgets haven't been stuck to is when it's too late. I'm sure that it has happened in the past, and you can tell me, but it'll be when they have spent through their budget and need a transfer during the later part of the year, the later months. These late-year transfers are budget killers, and so it's my advice to the Board that we incorporate policies that don't allow for this to happen. It'll also mean going to a zero-based budget every once in a while. I want to, I want to talk about what that means. That means that we would be, at times, going line item by line item. I think at least once every three years is smart, so that we can get a true starting point with the budget. When you go multiple years without going line item by line item, that is when you see the approach of, well, let's just add 10% to last year's budget and call it good. As well as a mad rush, and I'm sure you've seen this, to spend budget dollars at the end of the year because there's a growing consensus, and we've all heard it, that if you don't use it, you'll lose it. This is a recipe for disaster, which usually results in sloppy budgets and with there being no policy about inner-budget shuffling of funds. It makes it twice as bad because it promotes the idea that you must spend every nickel that you have or you won't get it next year. It's my opinion that this is the single biggest reason why we don't have a reserve, and why historically the county has had to rely on transfers at the end of the year for multiple departments, even to make payroll. So I want to thank the Treasurer and the Auditor staff, but I think that this is the big issue for the Board. It's too often that you can, if it's with a bottom-line budget where you marry your budget and your spending plan, it's too possible for folks to take, for example, a line item and then just use it for another purpose. But if you all don't know that, how are you going to ever be able to speak to what you spend on, say, supplies and whatever department if it's just mingled together? So if you really want to have an understanding of where the budget is weak, where we can improve, and how we can build a reserve that makes sense, then I think we ought to really focus on this and get some policies made. And I'll tell you, the other part of it too is, while it'll be not popular in a lot of ways, in a lot of ways, it's kind of the answer to some of the problems that we face when folks are asking about, you know, what are, what about COLAs? What about, you know, healthcare benefits? What about this? Well, if we tighten our belt in ways that make sense and we don't incorporate spend it or else you'll lose it next year policies, I think that we'll be able to actually do better on COLAs and some of the medical benefits because there will be more money to operate from. The, all the folks, all the accounting standards tell municipalities and local governments that they should have a reserve fund, and that it should be, and it's different percentages based on wherever you go. But the point is, everybody says we need to have reserve and contingency funds. We don't really right now. And so that's a dangerous place to be in. And so I, when I talk about the ongoing meetings that we'll be having, and I thank the Auditor and the Treasurer for cutting loose with some of their staff, I just want to put it into perspective as to why we're taking this on, and I think it'd be a good idea to take on even if we weren't seeing declining revenues in our sales tax. So I just wanted to kind of give that an explanation because I think it deserved it. But that's what our killer is right now, and that's why you probably don't, like when you have, hey, how mu, how come this line item has an exorbitant amount of money? It might not be, it might be because they don't really use that line item for that purpose. It could be a mingling of funds. If you don't go line item by line item every couple, three years, you'll never know. So that's why we've got to do it. So I just wanted to put that out there and kind of articulate that. Again, I'm happy to announce that we've hired our office assistant, Genesis Herrera. Again, you'll recognize Genesis because she comes from the Treasurer's Office, and she's, we're very excited to have her join the team. As sad as we were to take her from Treasurer Kelsner, she's going to be a good addition to the Commissioner's Office. I met with Director Beckley from IS, and we discussed that position that I just talked about. And I wanted to share some of the statistics because I don't know if you ever get this information, but just as an FYI for the year, there have been 1,216 work orders or tickets that have been opened, and 1,174 have been closed. So we have a pretty good success rate there. This past week, and I think these are just neat stats that I could give you so you have an understanding of what's going on. This past week, we had 83 work orders open, 67 were closed. Comparatively speaking, over the last three years, our average number is between 50 and 55. So when I'm talking about workload, the statistics actually bear that out, that there's more work being done right now. I met with Margot regarding, Margot Wilder, our HR Director, regarding staffing needs assessment. I've already had people responding on that, and I appreciate that. For the department heads and elected officials who are maybe watching and listening, this request does come for me because as we work on the budget and I discussed those line items, it's important to know right now what people's hiring plans are so that when we get down the road, if we are in a budget position that we're not able to, you know, accommodate everybody, we can see where the real genuine needs are versus what the desires or wants are, if that makes sense. I wanted to remind you, gentlemen, that we have scheduled for tomorrow the tour of Hapo with McKinstry at 10:30. And I also wanted to remind you that you've got an affidavit to sign and actually a search to perform if the keywords, if you have any of the keywords on a public records request. And so before today's over, if you could get me those, and Commissioner Baumann, you already got me yours. So Chairman, if you could get me that, I'd appreciate it. Keep it a timely response. And that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Baumann?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a couple of comments on our Administrator's Report. You just, one of the last things you did there is you talked about key performance indicators, and thank you for those. That's a, it's a, it's just a marker in time to be able to keep, you know, track of what's happening, and I do appreciate that. You know, sometimes it, it just seems that there's the churning, and you don't know what's happening, and to put a, to put a number to it occasionally is very helpful. And then also wanted to say thank you to, to you and to Mr. McCart for working on policy. We have, has been pointed out to us many times that we have, that we need to update our policies, and appreciate you working diligently to do that. And that's another kind of a key performance indicator for us, right, is good policy and how we operate within it. And so thank you for working on that and having had an opportunity to talk to you about that pretty extensively. I appreciate that. Appreciate your hard work there. And with one of the consent items today, bringing somebody back that was very helpful in our organization in the past, to be able to have them help with that as well. Really excited that we can put some solid policy in place with some institutional knowledge that you don't just get every day. To have six county commissioners working together, three passed and three current is, is pretty, pretty special in my book. So thank you, Mr. McCart, for all your hard work in that. And so that'll take me into my report, and I would have a request of you, Mr. McCart, is I was asked yesterday to be a part of a panel or committee or something about shrub step habitat, and the Department of Fish and Wildlife is really starting to push that, and they, they have run out of mitigation land, so now they want to check. And so would love to have your, your thought and insight into that as I approach providing information to our legislators. I was asked yesterday to be a part of that. Multiple meetings at the Hapo Center, had the opportunity to have a roundtable with Congressman Michael Bumgardner, and where we talked about energy, the, kind of the energy hub of the, of the western United States is the Tri-Cities, and talked about small modular nuclear reactors and how that is a clean, a clean energy. Talked about the dams, and former Congressman Doc Hastings was there, and appreciated his insight into that. We talked about the shoreline that the Army Corps of Engineers has, and there's been a process underway for a really long time. Congressman Doc Hastings started that process in 1996, and it is still going through the process. And so Congressman Bumgardner indicated that he would be interested in helping, helping shepherd that forward. And so in that roundtable was, all of our local jurisdictions were represented there, and all of us have one of the same wishes of our Corps of Engineers, and that is to reconvey that back to us. It was ours in the past, and asking them just simply to give it back, it's a, I guess you would say, a budget-neutral item for Congress. It's not something that they have to spend on. And with them recently, the Corps of Engineers saying they do not have the funds to even keep the park open that we have here, Levy Landing Park, that they can't even keep it open. I said, well, just give it to us then. Give us the opportunity. And so then another topic there was illegal immigration. And so a couple of things, we have the lowest ever recorded illegal border crossings right now under this administration. And so with that, it's done, it's done many, many good things, and there's, there's one, I guess, blessing and curse at the same time. While the, the fentanyl that's coming across the border is, has significantly reduced, and they're seeing that in, in our communities, that there's a reduction in supply, however, the, it's, it's, they're, they're making it stronger. And so that's the curse. There's less of it, but there, it's getting stronger. And so that's a, that's a something that we learned in that meeting. Spent lots and lots of time over the last week here in the courthouse with lots of the different departments here, lots of time with our administrator, and certainly appreciate all the, the time there. And then shrub step habitat thing that I spoke of, need to do a lot of study and reading on that myself. Washington State Patrol reached out to me and said that they would like to sit down with me and, and have a conversation. They are doing a criminal investigation right now and, and wanted to talk to me about that. So I intend to sit down with them soon. And then with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like a moment of personal privilege.
Absolutely.
So today is my beautiful wife's birthday, and so she caught up with me again. So she does that once a year. And then had a really unique opportunity. Most of you here know my son. And so a week and a half ago, on Friday, approaching two weeks ago now, he received an increase in rank. And so that was pretty special. And, and so then last Friday morning, his, his commanding sergeant called me and said, your son is being promoted tomorrow morning again. And so he said, would you like to share that with him? So last Monday morning, I got to call my son on FaceTime and tell him that he was getting an increase in rank, and that was pretty special. So he was a private first class for one week, and now he is Specialist Baumann. So a pretty proud dad moment for me, to be able to, to be able to see my son do that. He's, he's leading 14 platoons now, and he has 119 soldiers under his command, and that's pretty special to, to get to watch that, although it's from afar and in pictures and, and short messages. That's a pretty, pretty special to have, have my son working hard and being rewarded for that. So thank you for that, Mr. Chairman, and that's my report.
I'd like you to share something from me, and I'm sure from everybody else. Congratulations, and keep up the great work.
I will tell him. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's good stuff right there. Pretty light week for meetings. I tried to get on the Eastern Washington Council of Governments, and I got ahold of the clerk of the Board, and I was pretty frustrated with his new phone. I got to get this thing figured out because I could not get on the meeting. I'm like, it's still with me, but it may not be very much longer. Agenda meeting, and again, I appreciate these agenda meetings. This is an incredible way of getting everything put into place, the game plan for every meeting, so it runs smooth, and they've been running smooth. Thank you, Mr. Danzel. Got a lot of meetings with a lot of farmers out there, a lot of long faces. Times are tough. Everybody's complaining about their property taxes, so I keep bringing it up because I keep hearing it. We're, our commodities are going backwards. Getting ready to put together some Timothy hay and haven't heard any sales, but the price is dropping before there's been a sale. And it's just the way things are going this year. It's just that times are tough. Alfalfa, you can't even sell it. It's one of those things where, we're losing dairies because of the environmentalists and the lawsuits. We've lost many dairies up the valley. The cow palace sold out because they were sued twice. They got those settled. They got sued again, and the guy said, that's it, we're done. Cows were dispersed across the United States. Those are mouths that the hay that we raise feed. Our feed is no longer needed. They've looked for other things because of this influx of, when the hay prices got really high and too high, to be honest with you, they look for alternative feed sources. And once they get adapted to those, they don't come back to alfalfa. So everybody's telling me alfalfa is a thing of the past for the Columbia Basin. I don't believe that. With the number head of cattle in the United States at the lowest it's been for 70 years, until we rebuild the herds and rebuild the, the amount of animals in the United States, we're not going to see an increase of, of feed being readily available to be sold. But a lot of long faces out there and the property taxes. We need to have a reevaluation because I know this ground is selling for a lot, but we have buyers that are coming in, like the teachers' unions and the pension plans, who put in orchards, and the orchards are being torn out now. So they're playing, they're, they're paying monies that we cannot pencil to make it work as farmers. And therefore, we can't be buying this ground or farming it. And I think we're going to see a big reset here in this farming community. I think you're going to see a lot of these teachers and pension plans selling this ground at a reduced rate. So I'm hoping that we can readjust the evaluations as, as they happen because people are really complaining about the taxes on their property. With that, we'll move down to public comment. Is there anybody in the room for public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lewande Hatch, Precinct 100, Franklin County. So first of all, no prepositional phrases on your, on your proclamation. That was good. I think from what I understood from years ago in talking to our sheriff and what it was that made us a sanctuary county was agreement between those, the then Commissioners and on how the sheriff would and his department would handle if they pulled someone over. They wouldn't ask or identify if they were here legally or not. So I think that's what I was told, but I'm not sure if that's true or not. But it is, with real ID now, and with maybe an election next year, maybe that's some, you know, a topic that as citizens, we should be pushing for our candidates for sheriff. Another thing that, just to reiterate what Commissioner Didiar on property taxes, it is the assessment. So even though we're only being raised 1% a year... So even though we're only being raised 1% a year, the values are being over assessed. That's the problem because this is farm ground. But from what I was told, the assessor's assistant who was actually Benton, from the people, friends I have at the Benton County, um, assessor's office that they, that she was let go. I don't know if that's true or not, but I, I can say that, um, that's what I was told because she was over assessing property. And now it's happening here. And that is driving farmers out of, out of the industry. There's just, you can't do it. And, um, it's very frustrating for people that are trying to make a living and it's long hours. You don't know what hard work is till you're a farmer. And, um, it's very disappointing that, um, these properties from what I was told by someone, um, one of my people in my precinct was that the assessor and his assistant were using riverfront property as the comparables to farm ground. And I can tell you from the vermin that we have to deal with, airplanes buzzing overhead spraying crops at 5:00 AM and people harvesting all night long with bright lights shining into our house. Being on a farm is not anything like being on riverfront property. Um, the other thing that, um, I just wanted to make note is a friend who is Ukrainian-American who came here as a child, a non-citizen, was registered to vote, not when he got his license, started voting. And then when he went to get his citizenship, he had a real challenge. They did end up giving it to him, but he also works for the post office and said, you cannot believe what's going on and our, our elections are not fair and they are not secure. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Michelle Andries, Franklin County. I was at the cog. Had trouble getting it up too. Um, Johnny wasn't there as usual and it was a little difficult. So it might've been part of the problem. Um, we did talk to him about the constitutional compliance committees. And I want you to start using different language. We do not have an immigration problem. We have an invasion problem. And as de, as defined in Article One, Section Nine, migration, the act of moving from one region to a country to another, especially with the purpose of settling or residing in a new place. It also says that the privilege of habeas corpus shall not be suspended unless, in the case of a rebellion or an invasion of the public safety may require it. We're being invaded. This is a migration, but it's not immigration. Furthermore, in Article One, Section Seven, Fifteen, our state is to provide a militia to execute the laws of the Union and suppress, suppress insurrections and repel invasions. The militia is, is defined as ordinary citizens who may be called upon at times of emergency to serve other soldiers, as soldiers. So militia is organized and unorganized. Our state is doing exactly the opposite. And with, and with regard to the post office that Ms. Hatch mentions, which we brought to your attention, if you remember, they changed their policy without notifying the local authorities between the primary and the general. They started hand stamping time and date in our local post offices and we have no way of knowing if those are accurate at all. And we have, we brought it to the, um, um, Auditor's Office attention. His reply was, that's better. Well, how do you know it's better? I, I think he does a great job, but the auditor in Benton County was very furious. And we went further and found all these, um, committees that are created by foreign entities that oversee the processes in the post office. Furthermore, I asked, where do you, um, verify that they're real citizens? I said, Department of Licensing. Well, we have affidavits, sworn affidavits by a attorney who was put, um, out of being able to practice law by grievance of our fine governor. And, um, she's right. We have affidavits where they were registering people to vote that were not legal. Now we have Bill 5077 says all state agencies can do that. Well, I believe that if you're going to talk to the Trump administration about not being a sanctuary city, you ought to talk to them about the DSHS and their practices because that bill, I think was already practiced by bringing people. And I have talked to some people that have people at work in the DSHS, people that came from out of state. So there's a plausible deniability that our own state people didn't do this, that register people in DSHS and as voters. And if you want a real ID to work, that is where you have to start. Are they really a citizen? Thank you. We have four counties interested in our compliance constitutional review.
Is there anybody else for public comment?
I think he has a public comment.
No public comment, nobody else. So with that, uh, do we have a need for an executive session? We do. Okay.
We do under RCW 4230-110-1I, uh, potential litigation.
For how long and who do we need in the room?
We'll go 20 minutes, um, with myself, Mr. McCart, um, the board. We'll keep the Clerk of the Board upstairs to keep time. And, uh, yeah, I think that's it.
And me.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Mr. Danzel. Sorry about that.
No, you're out.
No, yeah. How are we going to talk, how are we going to talk about him if he's in there?
Alrighty. So we'll recess into executive session at 9:54. Give us a minute to get down to the other room and we'll be back out at 9:14. Huh?
10:14.
10:14, excuse me. 10:14.
It is ten fourteen and on behalf of the board of commissioners, I'm reconvening the regular meeting to extend it for ten minutes under the same RCW forty two thirty one one zero one I potential litigation. At this time our meeting is scheduled to resume at ten twenty four.
You know, I've just like had to end.
Okay, we are back from executive session with no decisions being made and at this time, we're going to reconvene the meeting and is there any other business for the good of the county?
Yeah, I have one and I, it's a clerical error from earlier, but since we've been doing business this way, I would like to just for consistency's sake, I don't think that we did add the treasurer's office to the agenda. So if I could get one of you gentlemen to make a motion, add that to the agenda and then take action on that for-
Add which?
Replacing the position that we took in the commissioner's office.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to amend the agenda.
And this would have been underneath correspondence to add number two on correspondence.
That's correct.
Go ahead.
So Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to amend the agenda under the agenda where it indicates correspondence to add an item number two and that item would be to authorize the treasurer's office to replace the employee that they are losing to the commissioner's office.
I second. There has been a motion to second to amend the agenda for a number two under correspondence for the treasurer's office to fill the position of the individual they're losing to the commissioner's office. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, is there any other business for the good of the county?
Yeah, I have one and I, it's a clerical error from earlier, but since we've been doing business this way, I would like to just for consistency's sake, I don't think that we did add the treasurer's office to the agenda. So if I could get one of you gentlemen to make a motion, add that to the agenda and then take action on that for-
Add which?
Replacing the position that we took in the commissioner's office.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to amend the agenda.
And this would have been underneath correspondence to add number two on correspondence.
That's correct.
Go ahead.
So Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to amend the agenda under the agenda where it indicates correspondence to add an item number two and that item would be to authorize the treasurer's office to replace the employee that they are losing to the commissioner's office.
I second. There has been a motion to second to amend the agenda for a number two under correspondence for the treasurer's office to fill the position of the individual they're losing to the commissioner's office. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, is there any other business for the good of the county? Hearing none, the commissioner meeting is now adjourned and at this time, we will call the workshop to order and I'll entertain a motion to approve the workshop agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the workshop agenda for one item and that's the Associate Development Organization or ADO for the 2025-2027 biennium to coordinate economic development services with the Washington Department of Commerce.
I second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At this, aye. At this time, then I'll open it up for public comment only on the item of the workshop agenda, the one item of the ADO 2025 through 27 biennium.
It sounds good. Wish I knew what it was. Wish I knew more about it. I support it if it increases our commerce here in Franklin County and I know you can't comment to me, but maybe you can comment to the public or each other what this truly is, a little more information would be great. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move down to the one item on the workshop agenda, the Associate Development Organization. Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Andreas, we will certainly get you a copy of this. So what we have before us, gentlemen, is we need, I need direction from the board. So this isn't going to be a real long conversation. I know that I've gotten this to you at least a couple, three times over the last month and a half, two months and it's a consideration of forming our public infrastructure fund. It's mirrored after what a lot of other counties in the state do, but specifically, I know Shaland County's had a lot of success and basically what it is would be that you would name yourself as the ADO and utilize your own economic development .09 monies to be able to best do what you want to do. Now, the reason this is timely is because we are getting requests from other entities for wanting, you know, us to dedicate and name the ADO funds to their organization. So I just need direction. Like I said, I know that with each and every one of you, I've been through this with you and you've gotten it. So if you could, what I would recommend is take this back for the next week, think about it, think about what you want to do with the direction if you want me to make any changes. But this will also be important for as we move forward and, you know, Commissioner Baumann had mentioned that we were going to be contracting with Eric Johnson for a couple of different items. I believe this could be one of them and so I just need direction on what I'm supposed to do. Do we want to try to do something like this or do we want to dedicate our ADO funds to another entity?
Comments?
Do you have any insight into what our .09 or economic development funds have been used for in the past?
Yes and no. So I know what they're legally allowed to be used for as it pertains to just the history of Franklin County. I'd be lying if I said I knew everything that they were using in the past. I know that we've got quite a bit in the fund. We've got the ability to utilize them if, the way that it was always explained to me when I was in the legislature is they've got to be used for job creation. So the idea is that you want to be able to create jobs in your own home county and that's the whole entire impetus and it can't go to, you know, a good example would be it can't go towards like operational costs, it can't go towards, you know, fixing up a building necessarily unless it fits a certain category than it can. But really what it's meant for is it's meant for job creation and keeping those jobs. And so that's kind of the auspice under which all ADO .09 decisions should be made. Now, a number of years ago, Mr. McCarty could probably speak to this, they were in the, what they called the incubator business. All these economic development districts would, would get involved in these buildings and then they would offer really low or cheap or free rent for the first however months and then after that they, you know, were expected to have enough capital to be able to move on and go out. And the idea sounds good, but what ends up happening is you compete directly with private industry, number one, and then number two, those incubators are all like white elephants now. They, they're hard to fill. The buildings have dilapidated. You all know the challenges of being given an economic development driven building or property and the amount of ongoing operating costs that it costs us to run it. And so this is the sort of idea that we're kind of taking more of the local control and that you gentlemen as the Franklin County Board of Commissioners, as well as, look, one of the things I like about it is MESA has a seat at the table, Connel has a seat at the table, Basin City has a seat at the table, obviously Pasco has a seat at the table. Eligible, you know, committee members will be selected by their jurisdiction or organization and appointed by the Board of Commissioners to serve a three-year term. Three years is important to me that it doesn't line up with two and four because that's usually what city councils and county commissioners line up with. So you want it to have the ability to withstand elections, I think, so that things keep moving, so that you're not having, you know, politics play a part in what we should be doing statutorily with those economic development funds. So like I say, I, I'm good if we don't do this, but I think it would be a wise decision to take it for a week and think about it. If you get any questions, call me. You know, you can get ahold of me anytime and I'll answer them to the best of my ability. But we do have to make a decision on what we're doing one way or another with the funds.
Thank you and thank you to Wes. Wes has talked with me a lot on kind of how this works and what its purpose is for and so that's been very helpful and look forward to having that discussion further. And yeah, look forward to addressing it next week.
Are you gentlemen okay with me scheduling that on the agenda for next week then as an action item?
Please.
Yes.
We'll make sure and do that. Thank you.
And I thank you because these are funds that are accumulating and certainly could be used to help further all of these entities listed in here, all the small entities out there in Franklin County, MESA, Basin City, Connel, Colodus, and including our own Hapo Center. Funds could be used there because it's economic development. So it's important that we start utilizing these funds and helping create a robust, lively economic area here in Franklin County. So, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. As I look through here, I've seen some fingerprints from a number of other places. I've sat down with, with some of our counterparts in other counties trying to have an understanding of how they go about it and, you know, what, what, you know, what their perspective is on what the purpose of these funds are and, and how they, they operate, where they've seen success, where they've seen failures and, and you named a couple of them, you know, the incubator model where they go build this thing and, and they hope it works and hope isn't a plan. Hope is a good thing, hope is great to have a lot of, but it's not a, it's not a plan, it's not a, it's not a great decision-making metrics, you know, it's good to have. And so I just really appreciate everybody that's, you know, giving me insight into some of that and, and I think that Mr. Johnson that's, that's coming as an advisor to us, that he would be a great, great one to, to have help with this and look forward to, to next week.
All right. With that, Mr. Danzel.
I, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't say this. I didn't know it was Mrs. Baumann's birthday, but Mrs. Baumann has made me feel incredibly welcome in the time that I've been here and went out of her way to come and welcome me and so I didn't know it, but I wanted to wish Mrs. Baumann a happy birthday as well.
Likewise.
Caught up with me again.
Okay, so now that we've got a clear picture of what ADO stands for, we have a second public comment. Is there any public comment?
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or-
of how they go about it and, you know, what, what, you know, what their perspective is on what the, the purpose of these funds are and, and how they, they operate, where they've seen success, where they've seen failures and, and you named a couple of them, you know, the incubator model where they go build this thing and, and they hope it works and hope isn't a plan. Hope is a good thing. Hope is great to have a lot of, but it's not a, it's not a plan. It's not a, it's not a great decision-making metrics, you know, it's, it's good to have. And so I just really appreciate everybody that's, you know, giving me insight into some of that and, and I think that you, Mr. Johnson that's, that's coming as an advisor to us, that he would be a great, great one to, to have help with this and look forward to, to next week.
All right. With that, Mr. Danzel?
I, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't say this. I didn't know it was Mrs. Baumann's birthday, but Mrs. Baumann has made me feel incredibly welcome in the time that I've been here and went out of her way to come and welcome me and so I didn't know it, but I wanted to wish Mrs. Baumann a happy birthday as well.
Likewise.
Caught up with me again.
Okay, so now that we've got a clear picture of what ADO stands for, we have a second public comment. Is there any public comment?
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
This is Andreas. Would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned. This workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned. This workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned. This workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned. This workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned. This workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned. This workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned. This workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned. This workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned. This workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned. This workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned. This workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned. This workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.
Go get it.
I don't want to be a broken record, but at the cog and with consideration of what this sounds like, even Commissioner Agnew from Grant County who has great access to water power, the nuclear mods are good, but the regulatory commission is going to take eight to 10 years to approve those. We do need an energy plan between now and then and I will bring back up to you the, the gas because we can still build those up through 2045 to cover us and keep our infrastructure growing for things like, you know, the dairy gold facility and whatnot. Mr. Baumgartner did produce an 85-page energy packet or information thing and the, the input from the cog was they never talked to us. They never talked to us for input. So I would ask that you pass on to Mr. Baumgartner, please include that as an interim for energy so that we can grow and maybe this can be a part of that and receive that. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, this workshop is adjourned. This workshop is adjourned.
Ms. Andreas, would you like us to send that to your email?
Here.[1128.38]